Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings, Reconvened Budget Hearings. I am Councilperson Erica Strausberger and I chair the Finance and Law Committee, pinch hitting today for our Committee on Human Resources. For this hearing, we are going to hear from the Department of Human Resources and then, following that, the Commission on Human Relations. So we'll start with an overview by our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt.
Thank you, Councilperson. The mission of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service is to recruit and develop a diverse and inclusive workforce, empowered and ready to create a safe, thriving, and welcoming city for our residents. They accomplish this by ensuring the workplace is psychologically safe, supportive, transparent, and equitable, and by fostering employee growth, engagement, and well-being while championing organizational excellence and public service. The department is divided into the following general service areas: employment and staffing, policies and procedures, training and development, diversity and inclusion, benefits administration and absence management, wellness, employment safety and injury prevention, workers' compensation, payroll, and the Pittsburgh Partnership. In the 2026 budget, there is a total of thirty-eight full-time positions, which is a change, there's no change, from 2025. Employee benefits, many citywide benefits are budgeted in the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service, including things like retiree health insurance and workers' compensation. The 2025 preliminary budget shows an eight million dollar decrease, sorry, 26 preliminary budget shows an eight million dollar decrease in human resources benefits line. A lot of that, I think, is offset by some trust funds. And then, a summary in non-personnel changes overall, there's about a $240,000 decrease in non-personnel funds. Specific changes include $209,000 decrease in professional services and a $30,000 decrease in supplies. And in the capital budget, there are two line items for Human Resources and Civil Service: the Neighborhood Employment Center and the Pittsburgh Employment Program, both funded with CDBG dollars. Lastly, there's a few trust funds for Human Resources: the Pittsburgh Partnership Trust Fund, Viva Health Insurance, and Viva Workers' Compensation. Also, Viva stands for Voluntary Employment Benefits. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to our Human Resources Department, and you can introduce yourselves and anything you'd like to share with us today.
Good morning. My name is Paula Kellerman, Human Resources Director.
Emily Petrovitz, Assistant Director, Compensation and Benefits.
Okay, so I'd like to begin, just speak a little bit about some accomplishments that Human Resources worked on and achieved during this calendar year. One thing that I think we're proud of is we've worked with the Public Safety bureaus to, specifically, I should say, police and EMS, and working with them on recruitment and how we could shorten the process from application to hire. And we did some process improvement analysis, some workshops, and we were actually able to reduce the process by one month for both of those. So, to me, that's a, that's a pretty big win because there's so much we have to do and it was hard to, going into it, we weren't even sure that we could accomplish any decrease, so that was great. We did revamp the benefits offerings to provide improved benefits and services along with cost savings for the city in the upcoming years. Another item, I don't know if you recall, last year, I spoke about a social worker position that was going to be in our budget for 2025. It's taken some time, but we do have, the social worker is starting on Monday, so I'm very excited about that role and I think that it's going to be a great addition to HR, but really to the city overall, to just help engage employees and be a resource for them. And, I guess I'll just open for questions, then?
Thank you. I'll open it up to Councilmember questions. We have Councilmember Barbara Warwick with us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Director. So, I do, I want to start off by saying, you know, it is always such a pleasure working with you and your team. You know, we've, we've worked quite a bit together over the past year.
Thank you.
You know, on the driver's, you know, sort of, you know, getting funding and, and starting up a program for, to help folks get driver's license, driver's licenses, or, you know, reinstate their licenses, you know, if they're doing like some kind of workforce development program. I know that we've talked a lot about Neighborhood Employment Centers, I see that in the budget. One thing I wanted to ask is, so I know there was an RFP that went out. Has there, have there been takers? Because I am very interested in at least a part-time Neighborhood Employment Center in Hazelwood, maybe at the library or something like that.
Yes, so we have been, we're still in process with awarding the bidders for that. I can certainly get you the information. I'm, I want to say, there were somewhere around eight or nine that actually responded. But I can confirm that.
Yeah.
And get back to you on the number and then also give you a status update of where we are in the process.
That'll be great. That would, that'll be really helpful, I think, because there is so much sort of new employ, you know, new opportunities coming around the neighborhood and I think that that would be, that would be helpful for folks to have that resource at the library, at least a couple days a week to start. The other thing I wanted to ask, and this is more of like a process issue, and by the way, oh, one thing I want to say is, what I really appreciate, and maybe this will be in part what the social worker does as well, I really appreciate working with your talent acquisition specialists, because sometimes folks come and they want a job at the city, right, or they're interested in a job at the city, and as a council member, it's always, I find it a little bit awkward, right, because that's not my job to give people jobs at the city, but, you know, you, you want to give them guidance and, and it's been really nice to have, to be able to say, hey, let me send you to, you know what I mean, and, and sit down and talk with you about like what you do and what yours, you know, what your strengths are and whatever, and see if there's something for you. So I definitely appreciate that. From a process standpoint, I, when someone does apply, because I know sometimes it can take time, right, like you put in your application, how does the response work so that folks are, like, they apply for a job and then they're like, they, you know, because sometimes people are like, oh, I didn't hear back, but I never know what, like, if they called on the, you know, you never, you never quite know what, so I'm curious about just sort of, what's the protocol? Like, if you get an application for whatever position?
So, when someone applies for a position, first, I'll begin by saying that our positions are posted for three weeks generally.
Okay.
So, a lot of times, if someone applies on day one, it will take, they might not hear for like a month, right, anything. They'll receive an automatic reply that their application was submitted.
Okay.
However, as far as whether they're eligible for the position or, and determined to be ineligible based on what they submitted, that notification comes after the announcement closes.
Okay.
And then, the talent team actually is screening applications now, and then, once they screen those for eligibility, they send the notifications. And it takes, depending on the number of applicants and their workload otherwise at the time, you know, it certainly can be, hopefully not much longer than a week after it closes, but it, it does depend.
Does that, does that automatic email, does that include, like, the date that, that it closed, so that people know, like, oh, I need to wait until this date?
The email does not. I mean, we could look into revising that, but the job posting does have the opening and closing date.
Oh, okay, so may, well, that's something for me to know, so at least when people ask me, I can be like, oh, just FYI, like, when you apply, this, you know what I mean, there's this window that we have to stick to. But that might be something helpful to put in that automatic email, so that they know, oh, okay, well, I'm definitely not going to hear back until this date. And then, if someone doesn't qualify, do they get some kind of a, of a, an email, you know, just like a, oh, you know, thank you, but, you know, sorry to inform you?
Yeah, they receive notification that they were determined to be ineligible for the position.
Okay.
And they can request a hearing.
Okay.
Before the Civil Service Commission.
Oh, okay.
And usually what happens with that, if they respond and they request that, and if they provide additional information in that request, their information, their new information is reviewed to see if they're now, because sometimes, somebody just, they quickly applied, they didn't maybe include everything, and then they're able to provide additional information, which then changes their status to eligible. But if it's reviewed, or they don't provide additional information, and they are still deemed to be ineligible, they have the opportunity for a hearing in front of the three Civil Service Commissioners.
Okay, okay, well, that, that's helpful. I know it comes up sometimes with crossing guard positions, because that's always something that folks are interested in, but then, you know, but, but that's helpful guidance that, you know, and also to make sure that people are actually using the online application and not just trying to call or something like that.
Yeah, and it's important for them to review the requirements and to list everything that they've done that relate to those requirements.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I don't think I, I have any other questions, you know, like I said, it's always a pleasure, your staff is always so, so nice and, you know, responsive, I appreciate it. And just a reminder to everyone that you need to do your, your healthcare re-enrollment, anybody who's listening in the building.
I'm sure everybody is.
Right, I mean, you maybe got an email every day for the past couple of weeks?
Oh, and you'll continue to receive one every day. Sorry about that, but...
Yeah, anyway, that's it for me, thank you very much.
Because it's mandatory, so that's part of why, every day. All right, thank you.
Thank you. We've been joined by Councilperson Charland online. Councilperson, do you have any questions?
Yes, and I apologize for being caught up in a little bit of emergency this morning. I was, I was not able to be there. And thank you, Madam Chair, for hosting us.
My pleasure.
The Director, it has been a pleasure to work with you, you know, over the last two years. I want to thank you very much for, you know, always being able to communicate with me and staff whenever we have questions, as we've, you know, worked with you on this committee. One thing I did want to talk to you about, we're obviously very concerned about overtime, we're very concerned about the next steps of the city. Is there a role that HR can play in helping to control overtime for some of the other departments?
The role that I would say we could play would just be monitoring it throughout the year. Otherwise, of course, we don't know that overtime has worked until it's been, until it has been worked, you know, once we get the entries from timekeepers. But again, it could be something that, you know, there were reports and it could be monitored, so I would say that's a way that HR could assist.
Is that something that you're doing, you know, I guess notifying directors if, you know, if, if you're seeing a lot of overtime in different department or something like that? Is that, is that a process that you're working on currently, or how exactly does that work?
It is not anything that we've ever done, to my knowledge, in HR to date. If someone was to ask, we can certainly provide information, again, and it is something we could look to start doing moving forward.
Okay, I, I think that's something we're going to have to have a conversation with, with you about, especially as we're talking about the challenges that we have in overtime. So, that, I think, is, you know, maybe the biggest question that I have for the HR department. The other question that I'm going to be asking all departments, you know, as we are coming to you looking for, or as, as you were coming to us looking for, you know, your, your budget request, we need to go to you and look for, what would it look like to have some level of belt tightening from every department? And I'm curious if you've thought at all about what it would look like to reduce the cost of HR, you know, by a, a certain percentage, so that we can help pass our budget at the end of the year here. So, I don't necessarily need an answer, but I would like to have a conversation with you about what it would look like to, you know, reduce your expenses by even more than you already have. I don't know that you've thought about that yet, but I do think that's something that we are going to, to ask you at the end of the day.
Okay, we can certainly have further conversation on the topic, but, I mean, if I'm being honest right now, unfortunately, I think it would be somewhat difficult to find an area because we already have reduced our budget and did not make any requests for additional monies this year or FTEs, because of knowing we're in lean budget years. Again, something we could revisit, but a lot of our monies, of course, are in order, are for city and compensation and benefits, so, yeah, but like I said, certainly willing to have further conversation.
Yep, I, I don't think anybody that we asked kind of this question of is prepared for that. I just, I think, you know, I want to help people realize that that is something that we're going to have to do in this budget. So, yes, but I generally just want to reiterate how much I love working with you and, and thank you for keeping me in the loop on things that are coming my way, and look forward to being able to continue that. So, with that, that's kind of all the questions I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I enjoyed working with you as well.
Thank you. I, I actually don't think I have any further questions for you. My questions have been answered, so appreciate your time, appreciate you both being here today, and we will move on to the Commission on Human Relations, but thank you all for what you do.
Thank you very much.
While our, our, our leadership from the Commission on Human Relations joins us at the table, we can receive an overview from our Budget Director.
Thank you, Councilperson. The Commission on Human Relations is the official civil rights enforcement agency for the city of Pittsburgh, and in its empowered, and is empowered by chapters 651 through 659 of the Pittsburgh City Code to investigate instances of discrimination, conduct outreach, conduct outreach, and provide education to the community, conduct research, and recommend additional protections in City Code to provide all people in Pittsburgh with equal opportunities. The Commission's mission is to decrease unfair treatment and discrimination by promoting justice and understanding among communities in the city of Pittsburgh. The Commission is divided into the following program areas: unlawful practices, administration and enforcement, intergroup and police community relations, and education and outreach. There is a total of eight full-time positions projected in the 2025, 2026 budget, which is no change. There is no change in the non-personnel budget, there were neutral moves made between budget lines without changing the bottom line. You can see those in the budget page there. And in the capital budget, there is $30,000 in CDBG funding for fair housing administration and training. And lastly, the trust funds, the Commission on Human Relations has access to the HUD Fair Housing Program Trust Fund and the EEOC Trust Fund, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Director. If you'd like to all introduce yourselves and then any presentation or additional information you'd like to provide.
Good morning. Rachel Shepard, the Executive Director for the Commission.
Christopher Salt, I'm the Deputy Director.
Rita Porterfield, Senior Investigator.
Courtney Smith, Fiscal and Contracting Coordinator.
Thank you. So, thank you for being here. I know it's Friday and gray, but we wanted to just take a minute to summarize what the Commission is and does, just for anybody watching, I know you know better than probably anybody. But the Commission is the civil rights law enforcement agency for the city of Pittsburgh. We operate alongside the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission for Employment Discrimination Complaints and Housing and Urban Development for Housing Discrimination Complaints, but we've seen quite the uptick this year in, in the number of cases. We cover employment, housing, public accommodations, and the delivery of city services as the enforcement areas in the City Code. And so, with these, these different areas, we're seeing different trends with the changes that have come about with the federal administration this year. And I'm, I'm happy to say that despite all of that, we remain fully staffed, we still have a majority of the Commissioner's seats filled, and that we honestly are thriving despite the hardships that we've been, been facing this year. So, I'm, I'm very thankful to City Council for having us at the table so many times this year, and for any future engagements that we have to further strengthen, strengthen this City Code for the Commission. We, we're doing a lot. When I think of the strategic planning process that we're going through and just about to finish up, and building a five-year plan for the Commission, it's, it's a lot of work. We, we do more than just investigate discrimination complaints. We offer mediation services. In fact, you know, we've, we've got a mediator at the table with us, she can tell you more about that. But we, we do mediation, we've been seeing more in the way of community tension inquiries, where there are neighbor-on-neighbor situations, there are community group situations that require some sort of intervention, and because there hasn't been very much of that in the last decade or so, we don't have a solid process, but we're in the, we're in process of creating one so that we can better address the community's needs. We were able to get housing status passed as a protected class this year. Thank you to everybody who participated in that, in that vote. It was very important to us to get that passed considering the number of challenges that our, our community's been seeing for people who are unhoused or coming from a shelter space in, in obtaining permanent housing. We've had a number of trainings this year. It does say in the budget, we do education, we've tried to expand upon that quite a bit this year. We had our second annual employment discrimination, we had our second annual employment discrimination, the administrative process, continued legal education, and that was actually presented by Senior Investigator Porterfield. And we've had several fair housing trainings for landlords alongside the Greater Pittsburgh Fair Housing Partnership. So, we are trying to be more proactive in getting out, addressing potential discrimination before it even occurs, so that we don't have to see quite as many cases on the back end for investigation purposes. We expanded our advertising quite a bit this year, again, trying to offset the impact of what's going on with the federal government, particularly with the shutdown. We wanted to make sure people were aware that we were still here as a service for them to report discrimination and to have those investigations conducted. We've been able to secure and keep, keep the reporting going on our Just Mediation Pittsburgh contract, where we are having fair housing information distributed to all of the folks that are going through their eviction mediation program, so both landlords and tenants are receiving that information and invitations to reach out to us if they have any questions or concerns. We completed our LGBTQIA+ housing research. We wanted to get a better sense of what housing looks like for, for that community, what challenges are they facing, what are the impacts of different policies of the city of Pittsburgh, and just the flow of the community on, on the LGBT population. And so, we can use that to better direct our educational and outreach efforts. And we celebrated our 70th anniversary as a Commission. We were created in 1955 out of two other agencies that were actually originally created in 1946. We're older than the federal civil rights laws, and we will continue to be here maybe after the federal civil rights laws are no longer in effect, because Pittsburgh does take it very seriously that discrimination is a problem even now in 2025, moving into 26, and that there should be an agency like ours to enforce the law and to make sure that people feel represented in their pursuit of employment and housing and public services. Would you all like to give any perspective on the investigative portion of our work? That is the majority of what we do, is the discrimination investigations.
If I could, Director.
Yeah, please.
I've been with the Commission for six years. I am the most senior of the investigators. Now, I happen to be an attorney in real life before I got here, which immensely helps how our Commission has been able to streamline. So when we give reports, we use the IRAC method, which is issue, rule, application, and conclusion. That is something new for the Commission within the past few years, but has become a national model. Our Commission is both the first point of ConCact and the last line of defense for civil rights, not only in the city, but as our reputation grows, folks from outside the city can at least start their complaints here before they get sent to EEOC. We've only had four investigators or intake officers as long as I've been here. Our caseload is expected to more than double, based on the number of inquiries we have seen. If you were to divide out our entire staff among neighborhoods, with eight staff, we'd all have over ten neighborhoods apiece. With only four investigators, that means we each have, what, 22.25 neighborhoods per investigator. It's simply not enough hands to do all of the work, yet we persist. And I would say, any investment into our office is an investment that gets the biggest rate of return, and not only actually enforcing the mission of integrated, strong economies and housing markets, it is the best return on investment for integrity in the institution. And if these last 10 years haven't shown us the importance of believing in a system that works for all, I don't know what will, in a sense where democratic values survive. We're worth the investment, and I ask that you look at that to make sure that even in lean years, we don't forsake our basic rights, because once we decide that civil rights are negotiable, we're no longer an egalitarian system of democratic equals.
As you probably saw with our budget request, we were requesting a lead investigator position to try to offload some of the burden to the directors with our court cases, with our more complex matters, taking on some of the more systemic problems that we're seeing with investigations, so that we have someone more dedicated to that investigative space, so that the Deputy Director and I can focus more on the legislative aspects, the education, the outreach, and, and really making these connections across the community. You know, as, as Ms. Porterfield said, we, we've seen a record number of inquiries as of earlier this, this week, we had 377 for the calendar year, and of those 377 inquiries, 164 of them are current complaints in, in front of our office. That's, in comparison, last year, the entire year had 282 inquiries, that was through the end of December, and we only had 92 cases that were brand new. So we've already surpassed that by almost double. Having someone else on the staff, just these extra hands means more to our office than I think most. Having someone else on the staff, just these extra hands, means more to our office than I think most. The work that we do is very hands-on. We need more people to process cases, to do the legwork of investigating, to be able to go out and do site visits. It will increase the number of mediators that we have available to us to resolve cases so that we can get things done faster and remedy discrimination in a more, you know, expedient way.
Our mediation close rate is 98%. And in fact, in my own record, I can only think of three cases in six years that I could not close through mediation. We work. Some of our frequent respondents call us the hardest-working bureaucrats in all the city. We do work hard, and that's not to diminish the work of any other department, but we take it seriously. We get it done. Again, Pittsburgh is becoming a national leader, or at least being nationally recognized for much of the work that we've done under this Director and Deputy Director. It is a dream team, and I hope Council takes that seriously and working to keep it.
And, excuse me, certainly we've gotten a lot of support from Council over the last year, and we're very appreciative of that with the medical marijuana legislation, the gender-affirming care legislation, also the housing status legislation and the code changes that everybody at this table worked on. Just to make the point, a lot of this increase isn't because of the new protections that we have added. We had 150%, I'm sorry, rather, there were 150% more employment cases that actually went to the investigation phase last year than what we had had on the average for the previous three years. A lot of those were on classic protections. It's just the environment that we're in now. And so that's kind of what we're looking at at this moment. I generally, having been an investigator myself in the past, I generally think that it's more than 10 to 12 cases for an investigator is less than ideal. We're up to about 22 to 24 cases per investigator at this point. So just to kind of give you a rundown of the numbers. Not including the intakes. Yeah, that is correct.
And while we are in this period with the government shutdown just now being lifted, we've been able to take the intakes for the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission so that people who may be running up against a timeliness issue with their matter, their discrimination matter, can actually get their foot in the door, secure that timeliness, and be able to get their investigation completed, if not by us, by another agency, once we have that transferred. So that's a service that I don't want to have to stop providing because we do see so many cases, or, excuse me, so many inquiries that come to us from outside the Pittsburgh area, and Pittsburgh just happens to be the jurisdiction we can operate in. So we're doing what we can to reach out even to other commissions. So the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, I'm in talks with them to try to find a way to create a work-sharing agreement. When Chris is talking about the number of cases that we are taking on, the state is completely underwater with over 1,200 cases in just their Pittsburgh office and, I believe, seven investigators. They are completely overwhelmed. And there are so many things that we can do to support them by taking on additional cases, working together for outreach efforts, and really trying to address the whole of Western Pennsylvania instead of just Pittsburgh because if we have the hands and we have the people and we have the drive, certainly, we would like to do that.
And I do want to point out one other thing compared to our federal partners. Right now, and even before the shutdown, it was six months to get in for an interview with the EEOC. That is past your timeline to file. Our office is 30 days or less, two weeks in most cases, for intake. That is huge, with so few people doing the work. And I appreciate the support that Council has shown because they have on the legislative side for sure. So now this is a matter of completing the support and making sure it's something that's lasting and a partnership that'll sustain administrations locally and federally and really show the true character and the best characteristics of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. I'm going to take chair with prerogative and go first because I am running a bit late for a meeting and turn the chairpersonship over to Councilperson Charland, who's still joining us online. I want to thank you for all of your work. I can't imagine being in a position of having a resident or a worker or someone enjoying our public accommodations in the city coming to our office and us having to go send them to the State Commission, who we know is underwater and is unable to give them the, as much as they desire to do so, unable to give them the protection that they need. Or the, yeah, I guess protection is the right word, or EEOC. So I guess my hope in the future years is that we can continue to build a relationship with the folks at the county, who I know have a dedication to seeing what greater role they can play with surrounding municipalities and expanding the offerings there. I don't think it's as much of a direct, like, direct implications to your department, more of a how do we, how do we share information? How do we share, you know, like a starter kit for enacting, you know, what might be possible, even though I understand some of those smaller boroughs and townships don't have the legal authority to do a lot. There probably, I'm guessing, could be resources that could be made available at the county level for some of those boroughs and townships. So we certainly don't have to discuss that here. I really appreciate you being here today. I appreciate the case that you're making, and I appreciate all of the work that you do, and even in these challenging times where workload is increasing exponentially. So, thank you. I apologize for having to leave. I will turn it over to Councilperson Charland, both to ask any questions that he might have and to close out and recess this meeting for the next budget hearing next week. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, you know, more than anything, I want to say that I really appreciate working with the Commission on Human Relations. I will be honest with you, you know, you are not a department that I knew a whole lot about before I became a member and really have appreciated our relationship, especially over the last two years as I got to know you guys better and the work that you do and really how important that work is. I really, I think the only question I have is, like, what work is being done to make sure that every Pittsburgher does know about what you can provide for them?
So, the goal I had when I first took the Director position two years ago was to collaborate in as many possible ways as I could with service providers in Pittsburgh so that the information could trickle down. Anyone that is serving Pittsburghers in any way that may also encounter a discriminatory issue, we go and do know-your-rights presentations for their staff so that they know when they're encountering those people in their own service provision that they can refer folks to us. So that was number one. We've also, as I mentioned, you know, increased the number of advertisements that we've put out. We will sponsor local events to get advertisements into their program booklets for the relevant agencies and communities that need to know that we're there. We've done bus ads. We've posted with the Jewish Chronicle and Q-Berg. We've done, we did our first billboard this year with Lamar. So we're getting out and trying to explore new ways of advertising. We're going to continue to work with Championship Chase to get that information out and on the TV screen so that people can see us. And we've used the folks over at Pinup Poster Collective to distribute our information across the city wherever a public posting can be made so that our information is just out there and people are seeing it and passing because we know, as folks who are doing the case processing, that word-of-mouth is the best referral source that the Commission has.
And I would also like to mention, Councilman Charland, for one of your events, we actually worked together to table there, and that is very effective outreach for us, even if we don't necessarily have a dedicated outreach person at this time. So those events and working closely with Council, I think, has been to the real benefit of Pittsburghers and Yinzers who wouldn't otherwise cross a bridge to come downtown and visit us.
Yeah, I can't believe that I forgot the tabling. I would like to take the moment to thank my Commissioners and my staff who go out of their way to make nights and weekends work to come and do the tabling. It is all hands on deck without having a dedicated outreach person, as it would be anyway. There's just too much for any one person to do. And everyone on staff has a passion for this work to go out and tell more people about it. So it's always really nice to be able to get out and do those sorts of things.
But also, like, you were not afraid to table yourself.
Oh, absolutely not.
I might, you know, I can appreciate that you might have staff that can table with you, but for most of the events that I'm aware of, you know, leadership of this department is not afraid to, you know, to go work a table themselves at a night or weekend, you know, event. So that really does speak volumes of your desire to get out.
As someone who works for them, and I know not only my Director, but my Deputy Director, will not sing their own praises loud enough. These are some of the best people I've ever worked for in a management perspective and in a passion perspective. And again, when I say you have a dream team here, I think it's almost infathomable, the passion contained among eight people that does the work for 300,000 Pittsburghers at night and about 600,000 during the day. So the little bit of support we ask for on the finance side, as much as, as much as that may seem in a lean budget year, it's taken to heart. It's your best return on investment overall. And that's why I think we should value what we have and invest in it in small ways so it has those lasting impacts. And you have been a champion in picking up the legislation that does matter, Councilman, and I thank you for that.
I think the last thing I would leave you with is that we are actively trying to get other city departments to be on board with working with us. We know that as an independent agency, that people will often encounter us when a case comes to us for investigation and then they're coordinating with an investigator and turning over information. And that that can be, you know, they're seeing that enforcement piece of the Commission. But I want to make us a resource for everyone within the city government and out that we are here to provide information. We don't want to hide the ball. We really enjoy being able to get out and share the information, share our templates, as, you know, Councilperson Strasburger mentioned, the county, and being able to kind of give them a kit, like a starter kit, to be able to do that. And we've had folks at this table draw up many of the templates that we use that keep things consistent and that we're actually sharing nationwide now because there are other Commissions that just don't have those resources and they want to know what works. So the fact that we're here, we are a small staff, so everything is kind of intertwined. But please feel free to lean on us as a resource for any discriminatory matters that you might be seeing, no matter what department. We can and do keep things separate from the investigations. There's no co-mingling there, and we really would like to work with you, so please.
Well, again, I just want to say how much I appreciate working with you guys. And, you know, you've been a great resource, both to, you know, my office or me and my staff, and want to thank you for the work that you do. But I don't have anything further unless there's any else you'd like to say. Or Peter, if you have anything else.
I don't have anything. If you have any questions about their budget, I'm happy to share it. I'll just add, most of their budget is for personnel, so they're very little elsewhere.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't have anything further either, Councilperson. We just want to thank you one final time for engaging with us and continuing to engage with us as we're here and doing the work.
Presumably, that's a motion.
Sorry, I think I logged off there for a second. With that, I would like to recess this meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.